2012 Active Planning Board. You can just point that right at the center of the blank table. First on the agenda is Stormwater Ordinance Draft with Mr. JT Lackman, the author of it. Are there any questions the board may have about where he put stuff, what he was thinking at the time, so on and so forth? So, how would we like to do this? Did you have something you wanted to throw out right off the top?
I could sort of go over in five minutes what I did.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
If you don't mind.
That's 15.
15? Yeah. It only needs five.
I'm sure I'll go over five. Basically, what you folks were looking for in the background was, you got a grant through the folks at the Scatter River History Project. They brought in FB Environmental, and they worked with you and developed a standalone, separate stormwater ordinance. Then, I guess, your code officer and some of the planning board members and other folks in town started to, I guess, wonder whether maybe it was too complicated for your town or too hard to administer, and whether it was sort of too big to deal with. And you brought me in, and I suggested, let's, rather than set it up as a standalone ordinance, maybe it would be more manageable and better for the staff and so forth. If you really took those same functions that the ordinance you created did and just folded them into the zoning, and that would be a lot easier to work out. And you sent me to work on that, and I did. I finished it in August. But due to schedules and such, it took me till September to get here. Basically, on page one, what I did is I took the... The idea that was in the original ordinance was, if you disturb land more than a certain amount and you were in Shoreland, Commercial B, or Resource Protection, you'd have to do these special stormwater standards. So, I started by looking at your land use chart in 2.7, which is your chart that's either got Rs or Ps, depending on whether you go to the CEO or whether you can do stuff without a permit. And I set up a category called Disturbance of Land in the table. And you have an R in Shoreland, Commercial B, and Resource Protection, which is you gotta go to the CEO, get a permit, and P in the other zones. So, the first thing I suggested to do is amend the chart. That way, instead of being in a separate ordinance, it'd be in the chart with anything else, whether you need a permit from the CEO or not. Then, of course, you needed that disturbance of land in the definition section of the ordinance. And in the middle of the page, you can see I added that under 3.2. And I didn't monkey with that definition. I just used the one that came from the FB Environmental ordinance. So, I saw my job as to take the FB Environmental work and kind of feather it into your ordinance. If you have a problem with the actual language from FB Environmental or you want different thresholds or whatever, that's cool. But I wasn't doing that. I was just rearranging things. And on the next page in my draft on 2, all I did there was, in Article 4, where it describes each district in Resource Protection, Shoreland, and Commercial B, I added paragraphs that said that the overall impervious surface is 20% limit and that you'd be subject to the special stormwater standards if you did land disturbance or construction or major subdivision, unless you could get an exemption. I'll get to that later. So, I once again keyed it to those districts. Then, in the Shoreland District under the purposes, I expanded the purpose statements to take in the purposes that were in the FB Environmental work. And you can see that I added the new C, D, E, and F purposes. That just sort of gives a foundation. It doesn't really do much, but it expands the purposes to talk about stormwater and phosphorus. Then, on page three, there's already a section under zoning called Filling, Grading, or Other Earth-Voicing Activities. And I added a new C to that saying that if the chart, land use chart says so in Section 2.7, you need to do an erosion and sedimentation control and stormwater management plan unless you're eligible for exemption. We'll get to exemptions in a minute. Then, on 5.8, there's an existing section in your zoning on erosion and sedimentation control. And it used to just... The section used to be just called "Erosion and Sedimentation Control in Shoreland and Resource Protection Districts." I now change it to say "Erosion and Sedimentation Control for Activities Required in Planning Board Review, as well as any activities in Shoreland, Commercial B, and Resource Protection Districts." And I essentially... As you see, I keep going back to having people look at the chart. And if it requires a code officer review and involves the disturbance of land in those zones, you've got to meet the standards of DEP for erosion and sedimentation control. So, that fixes 5.8. In 5.15, Parking Requirements in the Shoreland District, it once again says, "If you make a parking lot in the shoreland, you've got to meet the special standards." And then, in 525, this is the Stormwater Runoffs Section in your ordinance as it exists now. And here's where I added a lot. You can see for the bottom of page five and all of page six and the top of page seven, basically, I took the guts of what was in the FB Environmental standalone ordinance and put it into the Stormwater Runoffs Section. And the most important thing here is sort of the criteria or the levels that trigger needing to do more standards and more work. If you look on page five, Section 3, this is obvious. If you need a DEP permit, a stormwater permit, you've got to get one and do what they say. That's easy. Number four says, "If you don't need to get a DEP permit, then you have to do the special standards if it's something for which a site plan or review or conditional use is required, or if review from the code officer is required." And look at the chart on 2.7. And then, what you have to do is your Low-Impact Development Plan. And this is all straight out of, you know, the FB Environmental ordinance. You have to do what it says in the Low-Impact Development Practices Guide from DEP. Then, in B, 4B, it says, "If you're in one of the lake watersheds, you have to do your phosphorus control." And that's straight out of the FB Environmental ordinance. And then, five is, "If you don't want to do all this, or it's too expensive, and you think your project's too small, I want an exemption. I want out of this." Five, I took back from the FB Environmental work. And it says, "If all three of those conditions are met, A, B, and C, you don't have to do this." One is, obviously, you don't have to go to DEP, get a DEP permit. B is, "You are adding less than 100 square feet of impervious surface." And C is, "If you're in a flat area, you're disturbing less than 10,000 square feet, or if you're in a hilly area, you're disturbing less than 2,000 square feet." Once again, I did not mess with those thresholds. Those are straight out of what I was given from FB Environmental. If you want to talk to those thresholds, you certainly can adjust it before you go to town meeting. And then, in number six, I said, just to make clear, if the permit chart, if the permission chart on 2.7 says that you can do stuff without code officer review or planning board review, it'll always be exempted from these special standards. And the rest of it is really pithy. On page seven, I said that if you're doing a conditional use permit, you have to have a stormwater management system that meets the ordinance. Just adjusted H a little bit. On page eight, I said that if someone's giving you a performance guarantee for something they're constructing for their conditional use permit, it has to include the cost of the stormwater management system they're supposed to put in. That's added to D. Then, on the bottom of page eight, I did the same parallel thing for site plan reviews. If a site plan review is required, you've got to submit stuff on stormwater and erosion control and follow the ordinance. And on page nine, it just says, you know, if you get a site plan review, you have to do the stormwater management and phosphorus control. And in Performance Guarantees for Site Plans, you also have to cover the stormwater system. That's on page 10. So, just in closing, I took what the work you'd already done and instead of going out there in a standalone, separate ordinance so that the code officer or members of the public trying to figure this out, or yourselves as planning board members, you don't have to go to separate ordinance. It would all be right in there in your zoning ordinance along with everything else. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. How long do you think it took, Tom? Is that about nine minutes? Seven, twelve. Maybe it was 10 minutes.
JT, we kind of had a quick glance at this last time.
Okay.
And a couple of things floated to the surface that still remain in my mind as questions because I haven't had adequate time to digest this yet prior to your visit. We have these little things that Kenny Wall brings us every once in a while called Best Possible Location Permits.
Okay.
Your committee does.
And those are when someone has to move their house back as far as they can from a lake.
Or make construction or replacement. And I posed the question last time of how does implementation of low-impact development practices impinge on BPLs? Because I was making the case that a BPL is, in a sense, a condition that was prevalent. We don't treat it as such. It doesn't have the rigor of that, but it...
Well, I guess my answer is, right now, most of this... I would assume that 92% of the time, I'm making that up, these best possible locations, it's not on a 15% slope. It's less than 15% slope. It's a flatter... Because the house probably wouldn't be there if it was that steep.
Right, right.
So, if they're disturbing less than 10,000 square feet, you would not need to do all this special stuff. If you want the people to do the special stuff, you could just say, "If you're doing a best possible location, you have to meet this thing," and I could put that in. But right now, it would be subject only to the 10,000-square-foot limit or 100 square feet of impervious surface limit. Now, if they were making the house a lot bigger and adding all kinds of decks and patios, then if they went over the hundreds... Remember, you have to meet all three of those tests. So, if they were making the house bigger or having more roof overhang that went over 100, that would trigger the special stormwater standards. Or if they were disturbing more than 10,000 square feet, let's say they were cutting a bunch of trees and regrading and putting in a new septic system, you know, maybe if it were a really huge place, that would disturb over 10,000 square feet.
What my impression is that as time goes on with these BPLs, we're going to be dealing with more and more modular lots. And module being, maybe there's more slope in tailing these things.
Well, if it's over 15%, then it's the 2,000-square-foot disturbance.
Direct me back to the three criteria in the...
Page six.
Would you split those two criterias up if you had disturbance on the slopes and then up on the top, there was a big flat area?
Well, what I said is, if you want to get an exemption, you have to meet all three conditions, A, B, and C. And it's so... If they're adding 200 square feet to the house, they're trapped. They have to do LID stormwater. Let's say the house is exactly the same size, but they're just disturbing earth. It says, "Less than or equal to 2,000 square feet in area on slopes greater than 15%." I would say, and that's the language that FB had developed, I would say that you'd look at not the whole lot. You'd just look at what's being disturbed and how much of the disturbance area is on a steep place and how much of the disturbance area is on a flat place and try and measure that. You wouldn't look... You wouldn't be counting areas of the lot that were flat that weren't being disturbed.
Correct. Just the disturbed areas.
Right.
And unnecessarily the building footprint. It would involve driveways, paths, and patios.
Right, unless they were already there and not being disturbed. You're just sort of left there.
So, with that provision, do you think we're protecting the lake adequately in those kinds of situations? Would that particularly C in mind there?
Well, what you're getting at is what was your reason for 10,000 square feet? I don't know. I wasn't here for that. You could always go stricter than that. 10,000 square feet of disturbance is 100 by 100. That's a lot of disturbance, 100 by 100 area next to the lake.
About 15% slope.
Well, that's... Yeah, that's in less than 15%. Well, I don't know what the square word of 2,000 is. I'm not that good.
40.
40 something. 40 by 40 if it's steep. But if you have a flat place next to the lake and you disturb an area that's 100 by 100, that's a big... You know, a parking space is 10 by 20. 100 by 100, you know, that's a lot of disturbance. So, you may want to make that smaller.
It's a quarter of an acre.
Right. It's a quarter of an acre disturbance. So... But I guess, the good news is, if you like the format I've done, now you can discuss some of these things. And if you like it in the zoning ordinance, now you can monkey with just these little places. But, you know, it seems like when you went through the discussion of how strict to make the FB Environmental ordinance, you limited it to just the Shoreland, Resource Protection, and Commercial B. But you did exempt, you know... You exempted a lot of small projects. And it's really, you know, up to you. You guys, policymakers, how many of the small projects do you want to pick up with these new standards? But 100 by 100, 10,000 square feet. You know, maybe you'd be satisfied if you only picked up these bigger rebuilding projects. But I think the thing that... B is kind of strict and C is a little looser there. And B will pick up anybody who makes their house 100 square feet bigger in footprint.
What we're facing with this, JT, and the reality of this is, Linda Shire from Acton Wakefield Watershed Alliance, you might be familiar with her, came in and spoke to us a number of months ago and said that we're not gaining ground with our constant battle with all the little activities that we do in the public and private realm on lake water quality. We're kind of flatlining, so to speak.
So, the water isn't getting worse, but it's not getting better? It's getting a little worse?
Yeah, right. And weather conditions are, you know, with more frequent, heavier rains through the seasons. A note of caution has been kind of rung out to us. That's why I raised this point here.
Yeah, well, with my hat on as, you know, ordinance doctor, whatever you guys want, you just change the number. I haven't been involved in sort of studying your lake and the water quality. The woman from the Watershed Alliance knows way more about that than me. I just took the number from FB's work, moved it over. So, if you want to go stricter, you know, you can just change this.
I just wanted to get your setup back up here. Anywhere else any comments or issues? We went through a few last week. Oops, are any of those still? Let's see if we've got people upset. Page three, 4.6. We had a question on special low-impact development stormwater standards, any construction land disturbance over the creation of a major subdivision. Why wasn't a minor subdivision? Why wasn't just any subdivision? And was this...
I think that...
From FB or you? Because I don't remember.
I think I made that up. And what happened was, I was trying to figure out... I don't think that FB really addressed what kind of subdivisions would need low-impact development. And you guys have three lot minors and four more is major. So, I think that on that one, I stuck my neck out and just said, "Oh, well, we need to set a threshold for subdivisions. And let's just say, a major subdivision does LID, but three lots don't." Given that you were giving breaks to people on the 10,000 square feet, I thought you might want to give a break to people on just three lots. Since you give them breaks on other aspects, when they're just doing three lots, they don't have to do nearly as much work as if they do it four. But if you want all subdivisions to do LID, that's easy.
Oh, right.
Yeah, the only reason why I did that was because I saw that you were giving people other sorts of breaks on the three loters.
No, that makes perfect sense. And that's all we were looking for, is why, you know, you had the...
Yeah, and you're right. I don't think that was in FB.
Yeah, I don't... No, I don't think it was.
Yeah, that was something because, in my mind, I was looking at, okay, why would you have to do this? And it would be, you know, conditional use, site plan, subdivision, or, you know, a disturbance over the threshold of three tons. And, you know, and I saw that you were given a pass on a lot of complexity for only three lot subdivisions.
Fair enough. On page five, now I'm towards the... Oh, well, Tom's question of the best possible case was answered. But then on the last one, on B, who... Let me see. I guess we were wondering, who's going to calculate the phosphorus loading? Is this something that homeowner can... There's a formula that they can plug something into? Or are they going to need an engineer or somebody with some kind of standing to be able to figure it out?
They're going to need an engineer. And as far as I'm concerned, they're going to need a design professional to do any of this, unless the homeowner happens to be a landscape architect or engineer. They're going to need to hire one.
Got you, got you.
No one knows how to do this, that off the shelf.
Right.
Maybe if they're lucky, the kids are engineer or architect. They could press them into service. But other than that...
All right. Before we leave that one, are we sure that we want to, given the fact that we're limiting ourselves to Shoreland zone, use the term for such projects or activities in the watershed and the lakes? Are we going further afield than what we've circumscribed this thing to be impacting there? Same as if we are... Do you think by using the word watershed, we're including the whole town? We're including the watershed, which... Well, which is the whole town.
Yeah.
It's the whole town.
Well, I could throw in some leasel words there, but basically...
Was that in, of course? Liesel words?
No. What I would say is, if you look above it, K and B, it says... You have to... It has to show on the land use chart that there is a review from the code officer required, which is only in those zones. And then, you have to do A and B. So, I'm not too worried about that, but... What I could do is I could say, "For such projects or activities indicated as requiring this stuff in 2.7, and if it's in the watershed and the lake, then you have to do the phosphorus." I could throw that in. I don't know if it's...
I would say, keep it into your Shoreland Resource and your Commercial B, or keep it the whole town. Because if I've got a stat determined in the watershed, the whole town's a watershed.
Yeah, I could say that "For such projects or activities in the Shoreland Resource Protection..."
Are B in Commercial B?
...and Commercial B in the watersheds of the lakes listed.
You don't even have to use the word watershed.
I mean, it doesn't say... I mean, the other thing is, is the lakes listed or the watersheds of the lakes listed are the watersheds of the lake listed? I mean, I don't know.
Right.
And it's not the whole town.
250 foot from the watershed.
That's the shoreline zone.
Okay.
I don't think anybody who's in, GP is going to say, oh, wait a minute. I am in the watershed of the lake in town, I know, so I want to do this extra thing to tell they don't have to.
Yeah.
So I don't see it as an issue really.
GP doesn't.
No one's going to jump out and say, oh, I want to do something extra for another 3,000 bucks. And, you know, we know the three zones that we're talking about, so I don't know.
Well, I've got it noticed. Just let me know if, if you want me to, I can adjust that for B in that way. If you want me to, or you could just let it fly as it is.
All right. The only thing, yeah, I didn't see anything else actually. Well, the last, oh yeah, the last page, page 10, we're talking performance guarantees. Now, the thing with a, a stormwater management plan, most of them are going to need some kind of upkeep down the road. Now, should we also require some type of money set aside that this will be maintained? In the event that, that people move, foreclose the place, whatever, or that there's a new owner in 10, 15 years?
Well.
Or is that something that?
It, it, in a town your size, you could do that. Like 20 years ago, I worked for Bar Harbor and they would do performance guarantees for landscaping on site plans. So if you were putting in a motel on route free coming into Bar Harbor and you had a $20,000 landscaping plan, they would ask you for bonds so that in case you went out of business, you know, the town could install the rest of the plants. Then there was another thing for a plant, they had called it a plant maintenance bond. And that was a guarantee that if. I don't know, semi trailer ran down all the trees and destroyed your buffer and you failed to replant it. Or you went out of business and the, the plant seemed to be replanted, that the town could, in the future, they'd be holding this bond so that they could put the plants back. And that's really like, like what you're saying.
Right.
And I remember thinking, cause I worked for them, they never going to be organized enough to deal with this. And they're pretty, they've got a town manager, planner, assistant planner, two bullet officers and. And they, they were really barely organized enough to track all this stuff. Because if you have bonds like that, typically they have to be renewed every two years. And you have to, and as soon as they run out, believe me, the insurance company is real quick to point out that they don't have to do anything. If on January 2nd, you call the insurance company and say, we'd like to call on this bond.
Right.
And they say, ha, it expired on December 31st, ah, ah, ah. So that's the problem.
Right.
Someone has to watch the bonds and, and.
What do you think?
Sorry, I, I, that's my, my attitude towards it. Can you do it? Sure. But it would be, if you are going to have ongoing performance guarantees that last after the thing is constructed and go on into the future, someone needs to track.
Right. Now, I mean, it's probably going to be easier nowadays with the computers and stuff, because I'm sure this stuff can be just, you know, entered in and then when the anniversary date is nearing, then, you know.
Right.
Ding, the secretary gets some message.
Yeah, and you can do that with Outlook or whatever. And, and I know that, you know, in, in the, in the, certainly in larger towns and cities, they, they do that sort of thing.
Well, is it something that would make sense, do you think? Because the whole point of having the management plan is to manage the stormwater runoff. And if traps get full up with leaves or something, or, or French drains get climbed, or this, that, and the next thing happens, they're not going to work and, you know, it's, it's all for naught. And is this something we should, you know, really be looking out for with some kind of a guarantee?
I guess. I mean, some really bigger communities are. Like communities like Kittery where the EPA is regulating them under stormwater regulations. These bigger communities that are right on the rivers or ocean, they're setting up stormwater management districts to, to deal with this maintenance issue. You know, I don't know. I think you guys, I would just start by trying to get this ordinance passed.
Yeah.
And seeing if you could get people who live on the lake to install these things in the first place. You know, without, you know, and be successful at that, I don't know that, that I would. It might be overreaching to, to, to get into bonding, ongoing bonding. I'm worried about DEP projects frankly, because DEP has approved hundreds and hundreds of permits for subdivisions where the homeowners association has promised to leave buffers in place around wetlands. And the, I don't know if the DEP is ever going to enforce those 15, 20 years from now when the subdivision changes hands. And if the rate things are going, if you did a graph, you know, by the year 2030, there's going to be four people working at DEP. So. And how's that going to work? I don't know.
Right.
And so, so the D, I'm even worried about the DEP having enough capacity to deal with this 15 years from now, let alone.
A little one horse town.
Yeah.
More reason for us to be looking at it, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, but, but I don't know, it's, it gets pretty depressing when you look out to the future unfortunately. But in all of these cases, so, so I think that, that the DEP does this a lot and you do this a lot where you, someone's supposed to build something and they promise to take care of it forever. And who's, how are you going to guarantee that?
We could do it in such a way that the town has an easement to go on there and maintain it instead of you building, you know, maintaining it. I mean, to, to have somebody go get a bond, a resident or something to have a bonding was fairly difficult for corporations, I don't know, and they were possible to try.
That's not a bad idea. If we had some kind of a.
Easement drainage, owns the property and if, and the verbiage could be, we're going to send you a bill after two warnings or whatever. That may be a lot easier. I know some communities had a van load of convicts driving around maintaining them too.
Good idea.
Along with the road commissioners, you know, but.
Wow, that's crazy.
The convicts and the road commissioners.
Or maybe, you know, that could be a role for your lake association to take an easement. It does get complicated because.
But they don't have the authority that the town would as far as, you know, requiring, we gave them the permit. So this way, you know, we're also requiring them to maintain it. If they don't, then there will be a fine or something, so.
Add a T tax bill, add a tax.
So that, yeah, that, that might be a whole lot easier to, to work up and deal with, I think. It doesn't make, the easement would still be there.
We get to on a better footing with the landlords where you say, you want to do this, you're kind of obliged to do this. If you don't do it, we're going to have to pick up the slack, so.
Right.
At our, our rate, it could be.
Right, they'll be bored, inclined to do it. It may be simple enough, but you know.
I'd rather not, I'd rather find a means to do it that's more suitable to the community we live in rather than dispense with it. I mean, the reality of, when you look at page six, eight of those ponds, great ponds are, are 70, comprise 75% of our livelihood, so to speak, of our tax revenues. So ignore an ongoing maintenance issue pertaining to those, I don't think would be financially sound for our.
Well, if you want me to look at that, you know, I could try to.
I think Kenny's got a good idea.
It is a good idea. I think you really are at the cutting edge. I don't know. Honestly, I'm not familiar with the town of your size. You know, with, you know, sort of taking on this particular issue of, of, you know, not just a performance guarantee for installation, but a performance guarantee for maintenance.
That's, that's the big part. And it all depends on the best management practice that they pick. Ideally with a good designer, he's going to put as much maintenance free stuff in as possible.
I mean, any, anything we construct relating to stormwater, I mean, you're looking at beaches and public expertise, they all do that, so, you know, it's just the nature of the beast.
Right. More so than, yeah, really it's a subdivision. It gets built and then it's pretty much done. And so that's why I've never had to really worry about ongoing stuff unless they had some apparatus that needed to be checked, cleaned, what have you. This, on the other hand, is something that is constantly, or well, constantly, it's going to need to be maintained to fulfill its purpose.
The more stabilized the site is, the less maintenance you'll have.
Right.
And it could, and it's all coming off the road. That's not, that's the biggest problem in the whole town is the dirt roads coming onto the property to, to go through. So like I say, it's not even my water, but that's where you put your first device, catching the stuff right off the street.
Well, if this is something you think you want to just, or should we have Kenny do it? He came up with the idea.
Is that in place somewhere again? That note you took?
Yeah, I mean.
Could you give it a shot?
I can give it a shot, sure. And also I'll be sensitive to the fact that I know I promised that I would only spend a certain amount of money and time on this. And I think I only have, I don't know.
20 minutes left?
No, I think, I think I have a few hours. I think I have probably half a day left, but. You know, I, I, I used line share that budget you gave me.
Well, sure, sure.
To get you this far. So I think I left some extra hours.
Yeah, yeah, if you could give it a shot and see what you come up with.
All right, I'll look around and see what other small towns have done. But I certainly applaud you for thinking, thinking ahead, because it's something that, that I certainly worry about with the whole low impact development movement is, you know, if you have these nifty rain gardens installed at a 7-Eleven or at a shopping center, they have professional management companies that handle it. In Massachusetts, Connecticut, subdivisions that have 200, 300 houses, they have a professional management company. Comes in, does all the landscaping. You could give them the specifications for the rain garden, they'll do, they'll take care of it. But when you're dealing with individual families, whether they're going to do, do this stuff is.
And the person you make the deal with isn't the one that's going to be maintaining it, because the place has got to be sold in three, four, five years.
All right. Does anyone else have any other comments, questions, issues with?
The only thing I had was on page five on the top, newly constructed or newly established parking areas shall comply with. We're going to need a definition for parking areas probably.
Yeah, you know, I was kind of, I was kind of banking on the fact that, that, that you already had the word in the ordinance, so maybe you'd already defined it.
I had parking space is the only thing we had. I mean.
I'd say a parking area is one or more parking spaces.
She said that didn't even cost a dollar?
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I can play with that.
Yeah, we don't have to have it in the subdivision book. A definition anywhere for that. Is it common knowledge to the average person that impervious areas are more than just a roof or, or a deck or something like that?
Well, you're.
You'll find out when they move the town.
Yeah, I mean, your definition, I did not, I did, your definition is really quite inclusive. Somebody worked hard on it. I didn't change it. Your definition says packed earth and materials, macadam, other surfaces that impede the natural infiltration, gravel roads, unpaved parking areas which have been compacted. I mean, you've really got, you've really got the, the, the most, most complete depth list here of anybody. So whether or not people get it or not, is, is, you, you've got it covered in your definition, I don't know. I guess one thing that I've seen really well is in Kittery, there's an area called Spruce Creek that's really quite large. It starts up by Robert's Restaurant, but it goes for several miles out to the river and hundreds of people live along Spruce Creek. And there's a Spruce Creek Association and they've done mailings and newsletters to the people who live around there with suggestions about gardening and, and what they can do on their property to help the creek, you know, stay clean. They've done just a lot of education and, you know, and, and I guess that's the only, the only way to get, for people to, to, to get it is to, you know, have lots of newsletters and.
The big stick is they've got a, you know, three, $400,000 investment and the water quality is going down.
Yeah.
Their investment is now worth less.
Yeah, and so I've seen a lot of, around, you know, a lot of good education efforts and so, you know, yes. You've got to do more than have a really great ordinance. And you do have a really great ordinance, but, you know, you need to just get people's awareness up to it.
All right, anyone else have anything for? Well, so then if you take that thought another second about people not really realizing necessarily that it includes more than what we just previously mentioned, would it be worth in, I guess it's 515.5B, the part that you have highlighted at the bottom of the newly constructed or newly established parking areas which shall comply with section da, 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 da. And be part of that 20% impervious surface?
Yeah.
Just to, just to throw it in.
I could put that in there.
I mean, I, I just throw it.
Sure.
What was that?
That parking areas are included in, in the, in the 20%.
In that one, that's a different spot.
Talking about parking areas.
Because that even a dirt parking area, if it's compacted dirt, it's impervious. We don't have to define Scotsman. There have been wars about Scotsman.
I didn't know what magnum was.
Oh, macadam?
The cat?
It's black top.
By tumines?
That's when you have two tumineses.
Anyone else with anything for?
All right, I will work on some of these things and get your draft too.
And we really appreciate this. And it's made a lot more succinct and it's blended it right in. And, you know, hopefully it'll be easier to sell.
I think so, I think so, I think so. And the, the work you guys did with FB was great. I mean, I think you...
Well, it was pretty much F.B. I mean, you know, we did end up tweaking it a fair amount, but the gist of it was professionals.
But it's, you know, it is really good stuff. It's just a matter of, you know, how it's, how it's arranged.
Right, right, right. Well, thanks again.
You're welcome.
Take care. Have we got...
Good luck on your journey.
You are welcome. I mean, thank you. You're welcome, come with me, too, I guess.
Have we got the line pro? Are you going to present it?
Just the application.
Just an application.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Oh, 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 oh. So we got to go through the whole ball of wax, is that the story? What do we do for this? I forget. Paul, that's obviously going to have to respond to my location. What's he doing?
It's a survey office up above Krabby Bear.
You talked about this.
He is a...
Isn't it already up the mall? It's still over those post, uh, just the sign.
Just the sign is up.
So my condition, condition use permit application is just for the office upstairs?
Correct.
Uh, eighty-four. So, next, all's been filled out. Name and address of the applicant, block, total floor area, block, pervert's survey. Right. Uh, appropriate fees. Is the plan board going to adjourn for my application? First floor below windows. Which, where's the street? On this, does anybody know? Is this stairway something to be in the back?
Yeah, it's in the back.
All right, so the street's out here then?
Yeah.
All right. Is it? Well, after the plan board determines that the application has been filed together with the submissions, the board needs to consider if the standards, that's where it was at. If the standards listed in section 6637 can be complied with, the plan board should hold a public hearing on the application within 30 days. Now, 6637 is page 85 of this book. And if there's anything in there that we don't think they can comply with, then we don't hold the public hearing right off. And I guess we ask for more information.
Isn't that the parking and the traffic?
They got nothing but parking.
When wasn't there a hangup about entries and weren't they going to split?
That, I think... I think we'll find out more about that once we get... Well, you want more information before you go to the public hearing? Or they can come out at the public hearing?
Yes.
Or do we want, do we want a better picture of the whole building with the parking lot area and all that?
We could get that in the public hearing. This is a pretty straight. If he's promised us a hearing. Like a site.
Yeah, yeah.
What's he got, a building plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, just for his, the second floor office.
He owes us a second one.
Well, well, changes a lot of...
Is this an extension of the earlier?
A permanent survey, which he doesn't...
Early, right, he owes existing one.
Well, now, everyone's getting this one. This isn't Crowley, is it, or isn't it?
No, he's still down in his micro.
So he's getting this condition use permit, different person, not Crowley, correct?
Correct, it's the tenant.
Right.
The landlord is building for the tenant's needs.
But the tenant's getting a conditional use permit.
But is Krabby Bear under Crowley or is that under the tenant?
That's, what do you mean?
Because it's the same building.
Correct.
Oh, you mean the location of it?
Is that permit under Crowley or is that under the Krabby Bear?
Uh, no, on the ground.
Yeah, I thought it was Crowley.
Which I think they're coming back for another phase eventually, too.
Right. Yeah, I think that's how we've dealt with it versus the name, you know, Crowley Bear rather than the name.
You think Jim would have to apply to this kind of being the owner?
Well, that's kind of what I was wondering, but I don't know.
What do you think?
Obviously, in the largest cities where you're, you've constantly got the retail shops always changing hands, it's the tenants or the applicant.
I mean, you comfortable with it?
I am, where we're talking about a survey that most times is going to meet his customers on site. It's really a professional office, pretty limited on impact. And we know he's coming back in anyways for more phases, the owner.
Well, does anyone see any standards on page 85 that you don't think they can meet right now? That we want more information before we would schedule a public hearing? Or if you don't see any issues, that we can set a public hearing date? Or would you like to all take a?
With the contingency?
A sidewalk over there or something?
With the, with the, uh, contingency brings us the same thing.
For a rest of the land, we're stuck in Russ's home. Right.
The public will be upset with that.
Yes, no, they'd be upset with Mr. Crowley.
He's a, he does land surveying. He's got a lot of archival stuff. He's actually... Got it.
Consider it forgot.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just thinking how many years he's going to be there. That stuff piles up. There's going to be a lot of...
Most of it's all digitalized now, until you hit print.
And how, yeah, it's not like he's a real old business owner.
Well, usually you have to keep all your everything. Usually you have different notebooks that you make, and there's, every project gets stored in a library.
Taking into account weight issues? You may have too much weight, part of it will have to overbuild it.
No, I was thinking of fire hazard, actually. I was thinking of a storage place becoming a problem.
Well, that we can address with...
I mean, usually they're organized in shelves and, you know, by...
He has, he said something here about the fire marshal.
Yeah, the plans have gone up there. And I think they're in the final review process now.
Right. So the state fire marshal, if he has anything to add, he would certainly throw that in. I mean, we can require sprinklers, we can do anything we want. I was, with the planning board, got that? With the planning board.
Are there two egresses to the proposed place?
You have one primary entrance on the back. I haven't even did a plan review on it, because it's the fire marshal's office. It's under their jurisdiction, so, and there's dozens of windows out there.
Whatever they say, yeah. So the only other thing would be the traffic, we're thinking about it. No, I think your ice cream peaks maybe off from his hours, kind of, as far as the restaurant, weekends and nights, I think he's...
And like you said, he's not, probably going to have a lot of traffic coming in and out necessarily. Um, you keep referring to another plan coming forward from this particular piece of property. What's the plan that exists that...
An amusement park.
It's an amusement park, a water slide.
They're hoping to flip the whole building. So you're coming in from this side of the building versus coming in from the other side.
Into the restaurant?
Everything, parking, everything's going to get flipped.
So they're more separated from what will is?
Which is, it seems like a really good idea, just diamond lucky to do it. No, I think it's face three.
And that's part of the whole entrance issue, too, somewhat, you know? So they're going to take care of the additional parking that they might need for the restaurants in that, moving it over to the other side, open area where they've had all the dock stuff is going to become parking?
It just helps us to come in from that side, yeah.
Well, yeah, we'll see what happens.
Their big, their big project this summer is a septic system on the back. They've got a huge engineered septic system to do it.
Which is part of the reason for that this was stalled off for a while. I mean, because he, well, he had come in and talked to us a year or two ago about this specific idea. And at the time, the septic wouldn't have handled the additional personnel in the building, so that was the big thing that slowed all this down. So does anyone see any problems holding us up for having a, scheduling a public hearing within 30 days?
I would just ask him to make sure that he can bring us whatever he needs to show us for the septic, if that's ready.
Yeah.
And then a site, a decent site line instead of just a building.
Yeah, we've got the septic designs and the permits have been issued for the septic, so we've got that.
And if the fire marshal reports, we want to see that as soon as that gets done. And I may not be ready in time, I don't know. Because if I let one guy in there for the whole state, I don't know. He's part-time. So, calendar.
I'll take it down, we'll pay it.
I got it.
Today's the sixth, right? Well, what's, what's our next meeting, the 20th look like? Anything on the budget?
I'll probably have a response back from JT on the song for you guys.
October 4th.
Be after me, guys.
Anybody? Oh, maybe we should burden you with one last public hearing, eh? Uh, yes, but wait a minute, public hearing, conditional use. We don't need a butters list, do we? Uh, let's see, it listed here. 6634, second area. The board should notify?
Yeah, first class, post speech.
Oh, okay. But we didn't require a butters list from him, though. That's a mistake.
Well, darn, he maps totally, it's pretty simple.
I know, but still. I wonder why that's not in here?
Is it on the requirement form?
I don't know. But I see it up here. It is down here. Well, anyway, uh, no, yeah, we're going to need extra time moved. Yeah, let's go for November 4th.
Now you go two months.
Oh, wait, sorry, October. What's this say? October, October 4th.
Yay.
What kind of a day is that? Thursday? It's going to be a little damp.
A bit dark.
Yeah, it's going to be real dark at seven o'clock.
It'll be after we change.
So, uh, line pro's public hearing, what did I say, 4th of October, 7 o'clock?
At 4:12.
You said a lot of things, but I think we put on the 300. Hey, 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 take it easy, buddy. You still got a fragment of information stuff out there, Louie? You want some help with that or no? So let's notify him. We'll put up the notices and notify about it. Show him, ask him for the few guys to think for what we're for. Anything else? No, anything else that we need to know about this guy? Need to know from this guy? Okay, the... Uh, what was it? We're just, 7 o'clock at the active town hall, that's it. See what the crowd's like. It's a tiny crowd, we'll meet down here. Yeah, maybe, so, you know, why mess up upstairs? This is much more intimate. All right, so we're all settled? Good, what's up? Best possible location. Laura and Jared Johnson at 26 Flithedale Road. Hey, wait, what was that? Is that up, Grady's?
Yeah. Five, six, seven.
Uh, yeah, okay, yeah, I thought, it's not really.
No terrain up there.
Depends what these guys are.
Hell, land out there.
Hanging on the hill. So isn't one of the places to burn down, is it?
Right next to it.
What is a pump house?
It's a pump house. Of course it's a pump.
Yeah.
It's a little 65 by 87 inches.
It's tiny.
So what is it they want to do here, buddy?
Rip it down or replace it.
Just tear down the pump house and replace it.
Yeah.
So what's in a pump house? Bring water in from the lake?
Yeah, push it up to the house.
And then they go out again?
The water?
I was kidding, it's a little electric thing.
You better stop taking them so seriously.
It's just, this is either where a well would be or where the pump that they've set to run the water on the lake is. And it's a little thing, just, you know, they just want to replace it. Because it's easier to push the water than suck the water. So that's why sometimes it's places that are not right next to the house. Or in the house, they're set off somewhere.
I've never saw this before.
Well, you live in a fancy new area, you've got to get out in a state, spend a little time. And now, why exactly did, did you bring this to us?
It's a non-conforming structure that they're doing more than 50% renovation to, or in this case, probably renovating it down. I'd say it's in the best spot. It's some of the foundation.
Well, otherwise they'd have to be moving the pump and they're piping everything, they'd disturb it more quite.
Yeah. Is it, is it getting a new foundation? No, no, just going right off the existing one. Just kind of a disapproval.
Is there, and they keep it at the same size?
Yeah.
Did somebody knock them out? Why did, why is it? Publicly refusing the shit.
Yeah, well, it is.
Couldn't they make it any smaller?
Not really, without putting in the foundation. What kind of, what kind of vegetation is going to be disturbed? Do you have these goals? None, really.
What are you saying?
I was just asking what kind of vegetation they were going to disturb to obtain these goals.
Very high quality. You must have been at some seminar today.
Not today.
No, yesterday. This lot has 64,000 square feet?
That's what it says.
Are you jealous?
Nothing. I'll take a liter and a half, how you doing?
Uh, it's got electricity out there, right? So nothing is gonna be disturbed other than they're tearing down the wooden structure. It is wall wood.
Yeah.
They're tearing that down, building new wood.
Yeah.
Little half a day job. Alright.
Take two days just to lug it out of there.
That's what matches are for. What?
Is it on?
No, what was it mean? Let's see the pictures. Or is that something else? Good God. A little six by eight, uh, thing and we've got, oh, looks like a friggin' outhouse. Oh, sorry. They disturb with the bats?
Getting down to it and that guy?
Bats around here anymore?
It's straight down to it.
Well, they-
They didn't get a picture and they put this up.
Is it gonna be an issue getting stuff out and getting stuff?
So what?
The rail system right there is for the cat. Something around here, they're gonna put it up.
Oh. This is a steep pitch for this.
A hell of a bear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What if they got a pierz back here?
That's probably the hell of a thing to have.
Oh, uh-
Yeah.
Elevator to get up and back and forth.
It's a track or, yeah, where you get in the car and ride down to the lake.
Now, they get a permit for that?
Yeah.
Really? What was this? Alright, I'll take your word for it.
Four, five years ago.
Okay. Alright, so, have we seen the pictures? Any more questions? Yoli, just thank you.
What about like just getting the stuff down or are they gonna do a-
I'd imagine they're gonna write it down, they gotta-
I thought they were waiting for the winter to get a barge in there on the ice.
It would be, uh, an ice boat across the ice and the barge would be here in the summer.
Maybe that's how they get rid of it to float it out.
What are your, what are your recommendations?
It's, it's less disturbance keeping it right where it is. It's such a small structure and the use makes it utilized for what it is.
I move away, subject's recommendation.
A second.
Any further comments, questions, discussion? Well, let's see now, what do we got? We're missing already, so, five votes.
Do we, uh, do you think any added vegetation or anything like that can?
Not for the disturbance at the door. The area where it's stuffed in is pretty well vegetated.
Cause this looks pretty bare in here.
Yeah, the walkway down and through it and back and up and through.
Alright. You can always vote now. Alright then, any further comments, questions, discussion? Alls in favor of aye?
Aye.
Alls opposed, nay? It's a done deal. And minutes, if you may read the minutes. Did you get the little one picked up?
Did, uh, did everybody get a copy of JT's letter?
Letter for what?
I only gave it to you because I've been forwarded emails to everybody else and they didn't.
Oh, nobody else? I like hard copies, come on, baby, what am I telling you?
On, on his letter, it was moving, moving.
All that?
Yes, so I, oh, look, so these are-
Morning.
Well, this one, this one, this one's just-
I'll take the July nineteenth to watch first. What's, what's we doing? I'll take those when you're ready. Tom?
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Um, change the crashes. Bulleted points, hm?
Yeah, I didn't actually understand them very well, so, I don't really know how to correct them.
Understand which?
It was the bulleted, BPL, the board agreed that the bulleted points criteria needs clarification. I just don't remember what we were talking about.
Well, these were, these were the things that we had issues with that we went over tonight.
Right, yeah, I figured that much, but-
I should look further.
You want a different term?
Well, I don't know what the bulleted point, I, I just don't know what the bulleted point were. Were they in the ordinance or are they in our?
They're in the-
No, they're in the ordinance.
They're under BPL, they're not in the new score sheet.
The five point two five. And that's where it says, make no of five point two five to be, and there's two bullets.
Okay. I don't, it doesn't say anything about BPL in it.
That was for Tom-
Tom or off the BPL?
He's the one who threw in BPL. That was his question. He had a question about, um, either the site fund review or conditionals review. Yes, I think it was the, the review for co-conformers required pursuant to lending charge, blah, blah, and the budget that the kid was located, shoreline, blah, 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 blah. He was asking about his best possible location. They all fall under this during his term management.
Okay, so, okay, that was the-
That was one of the bulleted points. The other one was being on the bottom, cause we're wondering who was gonna, who's qualified to do these plans.
Right, now I remember that question. Okay, I guess that's, I guess, now I know what we're talking about. I just- It's okay.
The secretary was just getting a low team fancy for us. Alright, so-
No, I remember the discussion of the BPL, I just, I was just, I guess I was, it wasn't written down anywhere, so, I was not associating BPL with those bulleted points. But I now remember, I have it up there.
Alright, so, we're all settled then? Do we vote, do we vote on this?
Yeah.
Alright.
Can I make a request? I would like to contribute whenever it would cost to give my copies of JT's letter to him for, for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Why?
Wait one second, let's get through this first. Any further corrections or questions on the minutes? Alls in favor of aye?
Aye.
Alls opposed, nay? Fine, they're good. Now, Tom? Why do you want someone to have a hard copy?
The contents of the letter is worth, uh, uh, and his thoughts to your recognition. If I maybe saw kindness to help with that. Did anyone just-
What was it?
I found this guy.
Oh, the, what he's gonna be doing?
Yeah.
Like, the ocean, uh, sea levels?
Yeah, yeah.
No.
Well, we read, I read it, I think I need to have it.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, well, I'll make sure that we do.
Catherine, would you like a copy? Print a copy of-
I, I've read it, I mean-
Do you need a print copy?
No, Tom, no, I was there.
No, I'm, I'm, I don't really need one, I just, I, I'm just thinking Tom was getting that.
I already had this. So that's not mine, that's somebody else's, you gotta get me in trouble. Okay, anything else? Alright then.
Were you charged?
For history, can I table that?